All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to the January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the Delaware County Land Reutilization Corporation, also known as Land Bank. We have a fairly light agenda today, I think, so we'll get started right away. First item is the approval of the electronic record of proceedings and minutes from the November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four meeting. If there were any corrections or changes, of course, we are recording electronically, and then the minutes, the written minutes that were sent out are just the actions taken by the board.
Moved to approve?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. Next, we go into treasurer's report, not a lot of activity.
I just couldn't wait to say that very quick. So, we had one deposit in December in the amount of two hundred ninety thousand, three hundred twenty-four dollars and eighty-five cents regarding the Brownfield grant, and we wrote two checks, December the second, Civil and Environmental Consultants, an amount of three thousand sixteen dollars fifty-five cents, and Lerner Corporate Company, the grant, two hundred eighty-eight thousand eight hundred seventy-six dollars and forty cents, and that's the activity since our last meeting.
Okay. We have, I think, one invoice to approve, we'll get to that, but any other comments? Any motion to approve the treasurer's report?
So moved.
Okay, second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? All right, treasurer's report is approved. We do have one invoice. We've already received approval to pay CEC's invoice in the last meeting, so we don't need to technically approve that again. But the Ohio Land Bank Association dues, is due, and it is six hundred dollars for the year. I think I would recommend we continue to become, be members of the OLBA. I think they're offering a lot of good programs and good resources, and have some good experts that we can avail ourselves of as we need to. If anybody had any comments, thoughts, have an entertaining motion to approve?
Moved to approve.
Okay, Jerry?
I'll second.
Second, Michelle. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that is approved. Next is, on the agenda is an update from CEC. For those of you who aren't aware, CEC is the firm that manages all the applications and grants for the land bank, and have done a really nice job. There continues to be active demolition and brownfield work to be done.
Yeah, it's been busy. The holidays didn't let up on things for us to do, which, which is good, because it means we're making progress on all the grant programs.
Yeah, I'm sorry if you could identify yourself, we're recording it.
Brent Smith with CEC, so we're contracted to manage the existing grants under the Brownfield, Brownfield program, ODOT Brownfield program and ODOT demolition program. So thank you for having us here. And what I thought would be easy is just to go through, I had sent you, Jeff, an email yesterday, but I'll go through that, and I can always provide that for the minutes if needed. And then I also just have our inventory printed out, just to go through each individual project as necessary. So, where we're at is, there's the fiscal year twenty-two, so the original, the first grants, brownfields have been done for a while. Demolition grant, we had kind of done a hail mary with ODOT to get one of the Powell projects put on that. I did confirm with the city of Powell last week that that house was demolished before December thirty-first, so they're working on getting that information together, and then we'll do a final draw and closeout, and we'll close out the demolition twenty-two grant, which is great. So it was good to be able to get, because what happened with that project is the land bank had five hundred thousand dollars. A couple of the projects came in under, a couple of the projects didn't happen, there were some replacement projects. Long story short, we had money left on the table, so we were able to shift one of those projects over, which, for the fiscal year twenty-four demo program, allowed more money for the Ohio Wesleyan project. So then where we're at with the Brownfield remediation grants, there's three existing grants. So the first one kicked off, actually with Jeff Pates with Phoenix Environmental, has been doing some work on it for some time now, is seven-seven seventy-five Dublin Road property. They've been doing, you know, this is the sole market slash gas station, he's been very busy. We had a very significant, it was a four hundred thousand dollar grant, and we did a draw of two hundred ninety thousand dollars for groundwater treatment and different things that he's been doing. So he's making great progress. I think he's proceeding with additional work even today, through today. So we're anticipating another draw on that grant shortly, and then hopefully that leads to successful closure of that project. So that grant's moving right along. The second grant is being managed by the county, and it is the fourteen oh five U.S. Highway twenty-three North. It's an assessment UST removal. I confirmed with Justin Avi earlier this week that that project is done, so, and they have the NFA from Buster, so it's just a matter of turning in the reports and doing a final draw request and report on, on the grant amount, and that, that one will actually be done, which is great.
Good, good.
And then the third project is-
Yeah, Justin, is there any, any update on that, Justin? You're kind of hiding behind the door there.
Nice, board members. Justin Avi, Director of Finance. Just some updates, this was the removal of two fuel tanks at the old service station facility, twenty-three North by the Board of Elections. The work was done the week before Thanksgiving, and then we got the closeout letter from the Fire Marshal's office last week. So I'll be working with Brent to submit reimbursement next week, and it's for forty-nine thousand one hundred dollars.
Okay, good. Do we need action on that from the board to reimburse the county?
We didn't do anything for the Lerner project. We can, if you prefer.
Okay, okay. I didn't think we did, but I just didn't want to miss the opportunity.
Yeah, I think that the motion was to have us submit the draw request up to the grant amount, so that we have discussions only if we exceed the grant.
Right, right, makes sense. Okay, very good. Good to have that done.
Yep.
Thanks, Justin.
Okay, and then the third Brownfield project is the fifty Channing Street redevelopment. This is a demolition, asbestos abatement, bigger project. It was actually fully funded back in December, which is great. It's a one million forty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollar project.
Yeah.
It's massive, and that's great, because that means that the county was able to get ahold of some of the non-set-aside money with, with a project that large. So that one, right now, we're waiting on getting the agreement and getting the agreement and the grant signed, but we have confirmed with the developer, you know, they can go ahead and start with their work, so we'll, we'll be kicking that one off in the next month or two, to, you know, to kind of monitor their progress and get the reports in for ODOT.
Right. Yeah, again, that's, I don't know, you're, I'm sure you're familiar with that one, that's a big project in the city here that is a former county property that we've sold to Homeport.
Homeport.
They're developing a really nice project to bring some more affordable housing, you know, to that area. Again, it's just a win-win.
Yeah, and they're really excited about it, because, you know, with these grants, it's always, people worry, raise the question, will we get the money? Will we get the money? This is the one we didn't know, if we would get all of the money, or if we would just get the set-aside amount. So that's a huge win for the county.
Yep.
So that'll be neat to watch that one, as it kicks off over the next couple of months.
Yeah, and that was really critical, getting that funding, to getting that project to work, you know, financially, so.
Yeah.
It's very important that they get that, and it'll be a really nice add to the community.
Yes, and that'll be a good one for everyone to talk about, when it's, when it's done, for sure. So that's everything with the Brownfield projects, well, with the current Brownfield projects, and I, we'll get to the newer ones on the next agenda item. But then with the demo project, so with the demo grant, there was a, we had, let's see, I covered the last demo grant with the city of Powell, yeah, so this, the current application, which was put in in March of last year, we thought we had it all solved, had them all the information, and we got an email last week that you forwarded us, asking for more information. Emily and I have been through that, it's actually really simple. We had this whole shuffling of taking the forty-two Scioto Street Powell project and shifting it to the old grant, and then there was this issue with the Ohio Wesleyan project, which had budgets for both the set-aside five hundred thousand dollars plus asking for additional statewide money. Well, the statewide money apparently has been dried up for some time, so what happened with this is they're funding the five hundred thousand dollars, but then the Ohio Wesleyan project is going to have to have a larger, they're going to have to demonstrate a larger match for the project. So we've been through the comments, and really all it is, is we've been through the, we had, they opened the, reopened the application portal, instead of sending all these email arounds, they just said, "We rejected the application, it's back open online for us to make all the corrections." So we've adjusted all the budget numbers according to all the shifting of projects, and I think we just need to get a letter from Ohio Wesleyan saying that they will pay the difference of the project with the, between the original cost and the grant-funded amount, which is about a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, I think. So those, one of the, that's one of the conversations I'll be having with Ohio Wesleyan. So basically, what I expect to happen on that grant is, we're, we have a deadline of the thirtieth, I believe, but we're going to try to get it resolved as soon as possible. So as soon as I can get that letter from Ohio Wesleyan, we will actually, Emily will resubmit the application online, and that should be it. We'd expect to hear an announcement as soon as they're, as they can.
Yeah, I was talking to Wesleyan before the holidays, and they're anxious to get moving. They, they recognize that time is getting tight.
Yeah.
Because I think it has to be knocked down by the end of June, if I'm-
Right, but I, I could see it with how, how delayed they are.
They might extend it.
Yeah, they're going to, because with the first round of the twenty-two, twenty-two grants, they eventually got to the point with the Brownfield projects of allowing extensions indefinitely, because they recognize that, you know, if you get, if you have a grant period that ends, say, you know, June of this year, but you're not hearing about whether you got it until February, there may be a few things, yeah.
Kind of hard to get done.
Yeah, yeah, it's not exactly fair, so it's, it, I think they're just under a lot of pressure to make sure they're allocating the money, because they have the money, it can't just sit there, it has to be allocated. So I think ODOT is getting caught up with their applications, getting everything allocated, and then it's, then it's sit back, well, not sit back and relax, but get ready for the next round.
Yeah, Steve Lapello is the, should, is the primary contact at Wesleyan, he's aware of it, and I'm sure he can get the paperwork needed.
Yeah, and that's what I plan on reaching out to him tomorrow.
Good, good.
Yeah, so that should be a pretty easy process. And with that, we'll, well, as we'll cover under the next, the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, we'll be having that discussion with them as well, to see if there's another application for that, that they would like to go after for a Brownfield project.
Yeah, there may be.
Yeah.
There may be, so.
Okay, okay. Well, are there any other questions on the active grants?
I don't have any others, I think we're good. Okay, thank you, Brent.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Again, great, great progress on that.
And then do you want me to go over the, the next agenda item?
Yeah.
Well, we can just go into the next, next one, that's the Brownfield grants, which is the main action item for today.
Yeah. So I apologize, I wasn't able to provide that summary until yesterday. Where are ODOTs at with announcing the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five application period? We haven't heard anything. What I've heard is it's no different from what I heard back in November, which is ODOT, they were waiting to get through all the, the open applications, which for the Brownfield program, I believe they're done, but I haven't heard official confirmation. And obviously, for the demo program, if we're still working on one, there's probably still other ones out there. So I think they were waiting to get those applications done before they open up the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five application period. I still expect there's going to be at least thirty days, if not sixty days, of, of lead-up to it. So I know the guidelines are going to be the same, too, so then we, what we did, just for everyone's knowledge, is I sent to Jeff and Justin a draft application form, or did I, I might have had that for the last meeting, I might have had that here, I can't remember. I either did it right before or right after the last meeting. But anyways, we have an application form that outlines, here's all the information we need for the application, we've provided to a couple of different people. Jeff Pates with Phoenix Environmental has provided, actually, a wealth of information up to possibly four projects, but basically what we're doing is getting all the application information together. So we don't have all the attachments and, and specific cost estimates and letters of support and things like that, but the goal of what I put together yesterday and sent on to you was just to have a, an idea of what our inventory would be of the, of the projects the land bank would want to, you know, consider for that, for the twenty-twenty-five application. So at this point, I'm kind of thinking April first, you know, maybe that's the next target to look at, unless we hear something this week. And I think whenever we hear something, Emily and I will be all over this, just to make sure, because we want to make sure it's highly competitive. We're hoping that they will open the application for filling it out before the actual opening date, so that when we, when we go to submit, we can just click on the button. If it opens at eight AM, we're both logged on to our computers, click and submit at eight AM, because it's, they have a pot of money, and it's going to be competitive, and as we saw from the prior rounds, the bigger cities that are, I know that Cuyahoga County had all their application requests into people by Thanksgiving, and then Summit County's been big on it, and I'm sure Hamilton is. Franklin County, I'm not sure so much about them. But anyways, the point being is, we need to be on top of it. So I think we're in a good position, so what I, and did you distribute this to anybody?
I, I did, but I sent it out just before the meeting, so I'm not sure everybody's had a chance to look at it yet.
No, that's okay. I brought a couple-
Jeff Pates is here, so he can, he can supplement, you know, what-
Okay. Well, yeah, I can give a, I can give a brief overview, and if you have anything else, you can jump up and add it. Yeah, and I have a couple extra copies, is why I bring, I just brought like four extra copies, so if anybody needs one, I can just provide the inventory. But basically, what Jeff helped me put together is, there's four different sites, it's essentially three different assessment projects, one being Ashley Petroleum Project on South Franklin Street in Ashley, Ohio. It's an abandoned gas station site where there's a, a good bit of work that needs to be done, from assessment standpoint, like Phase One, there's, oh wait, there's a draft Phase One done already. A geophysical survey, UST removals, the whole process with the Bureau of Underground Storage Tanks to obtain closure. So that's, that's a good-sized project, and I think we have, that's the one, I think Jeff forwarded this to me originally, probably three months ago. So that's kind of like top of the priority list as far as what we have so far. But, and that seems like one that's very likely to be able, easy to get all the information together, have a good budget, and get the application done in a timely fashion. Then the next one is the Lake Street Gas Station, which is eighty-five Lake Street, Delaware, here in Delaware. And this is another former service state, station, where basically they had improper closure of tanks. A lot of times, people will say, well, we just close them in tank, we close them in place, fill them up, fill them with concrete or something, and not do anything about the gasoline. So there's a wealth of work that needs to be do there, done there. Jeff is proposing another three hundred thousand dollar assessment grant, and that's to do a Phase One, Phase Two, because there's other issues on the site, including some hydraulic lifts that need to be checked out, and then, and then additional tank closures. So that seems pretty likely to move forward as well, and we're going to continue working with Jeff to get the information together and have a viable application. And then there's this, the next one is called, we're calling it the Ashley Gateway Remediation Project, and it's on South Franklin Street in, in Ashley, Ohio. This is another former gas station with, with an old UST issue. This is another orphaned site. So these orphan sites, you know, these is pre-regulation, somebody just shut up shop and stopped operating their gas station before they got regulated, so these ones are just, they're always big community nuisances, because it's that corner gas station that nobody can redevelop, because they know there's probably a problem in the ground. So this is another really similar, he has about a hundred and sixty thousand dollar budget, looking at that right now, that's, could be subject to change, but I think on these, we're going to go with the approach, we've worked to say, you know, this is grant projects, we want to do something that's reasonable, but be fair, it's like Buster Projects, it's an iterative process to do a UST investigation, so you have to budget high, because you only know what you know. If you don't have a hole in the ground, you don't know how bad the problem is. So I'm encouraging him to, you know, be, be judicious with his budgeting to make sure the project can be completed, because these all have a good, you know, redevelopment angle to them, importance to the community.
The two Ashley locations are not, not the same location, just different parts of the same-
Correct, right.
Yeah, they're, they're different properties.
Okay, that's what I thought.
They're separate by, by four of them.
Okay, and the last one, this one's kind of, would be considered a long shot. Jeff and I were just discussing this yesterday, it's the former OB's gas station on North Twenty-three here in Delaware. This one, I think, there's somewhat of a scope put together for remediation, which would be asbestos removal and demolition of the building, but we're not confident, right, at this point about the landowners or property owners' cooperation, so we've got to make sure we get things in, and we'll get in touch with them and hear back from the property owner. And I'm not, Jeff would have to speak more about this, because I'm not familiar with this project at all. We wanted to just put it on here, though, just so we had the most up-to-date inventory for the land bank, because I think moving forward, what's going to be wise is, we should assign a priority to these, you know, at some point, especially if, let's say, we get additional projects with Ohio Wesleyan, it's going to warrant a conversation by the land bank, if there is some sort of order of importance based on important, you know, economic redevelopment purposes for the land bank. We want to assign them, you know, one through five, what are we going to put them in, what order? That would be the lowest priority until we, until Jeff hears back from the property owner, and we know that they're, you know, willing to be cooperative, because I understand there might be some other issues there.
And the priority means, just because there's only so much funding for these projects, is that?
Right. And right now, we don't know, because it's competitive this time, it's not like in previous, the previous two rounds of funding, the county had a million dollars. So you know that no matter what, you could take your, your sweet time putting the applications in, up to that million dollars, everything else above that is competitive. So we just want to, knowing that the other, some of the other larger population counties have really greatly benefited and, and been very aggressive with their applications, we just want to make sure we're being as competitive as possible. And then also, it's just smart to, as, you know, as the land bank, just assign a priority, knowing on the economic importance of this. You know, like Ashley, they're both important, but maybe one takes precedence over the other. And then obviously, you know, the, the other projects, or something for Ohio Wesleyan, that depends on what they're trying to do, and, and the county's relationship with Ohio Wesleyan, which I, you know, I'm sure it's very important. So it's really, just comes down to what order you're clicking the button to submit them, because we'll have everything else together, we're going to make the process streamlined as possible, but I just, I just never get a great feeling about something that's competitive like that, it's first come, first served. You know, if they, you know, Cuyahoga County has ten people working on applications that can all hit submit at the same time, well, they're all in line in front of us.
Yeah.
And then, you know, we're, we're only a couple of people doing these applications, so we're going to do our best.
I have a question real quick. If a city were to remediate one of these projects, could the Brownfield grant money be used to reimburse the city after the fact?
Uh, yeah, this grant, okay, that's a great question. So this, this particular grant, the fiscal year twenty-five, the spend date on it actually opened up on July third, so they're very far behind. So they actually have a lookback of qualifying expenses. So if there's a project, let's say the city completed latter half of last year, where you have all the receipts, you have all the information, it qualifies as, you know, an actual environmental project, you, you fit all the, you check all the boxes, you could turn that in and just be reimbursed. There could just be a project that is already done and just gets reimbursed, so, yes.
So say this, this last on this OB's, if the city were to go in and remediate the asbestos and tear down the building now, and then could we still apply for the Brownfield grant and get reimbursed?
Absolutely. The only thing is, is knowing with asbestos and demolition projects, the things that you have to have is the asbestos survey, and then one little interesting part about the remediation program is you have to have a Phase One as well. So that would be the other qualifying piece.
Okay.
Okay.
Other questions for Brent?
I guess Jeff is there?
Appreciate the update, yeah, well, come on up, Jeff, you're here. We're just, I, I know I had a few questions about just some of the, some of the projects in particular, but-
Sure.
I don't know if anybody else has any, any questions. Sonar, go ahead.
So with the, the OB's gas station, did the property owner reach out to you?
We've been working with them for about five years. And it was originally through, and by the way, I'm Jeff Pates with Phoenix Environmental. We originally were working with them to go for the abandoned service station grant, but we determined that they weren't the, they weren't eligible for it because of certain factors. So we actually did help them with doing the removal of the tanks that they had there, so we've addressed that issue, and that's been NFA, no further actions. But we're in contract with them, or in contact with them, they've just been slower to kind of respond on some of this stuff, and just, I think it's just a process, it's just, they're just not there yet. We have had conversations, actually, a lot yesterday, and they're actually supposed to be trying to get here, so, and they're here. So we're, we're just trying to get them to that next step. In order to really get a cost together, we need to get an asbestos survey done, so we can know what the demo cost is going to be, and the maintenance costs are going to be.
Yeah, so the city's already done the asbestos survey.
Really?
Yeah, so this, the chief building official and the code enforcement officers have been trying to work with the property owners to get the site taken care of, and it sounds like the property owners haven't been responsive.
Okay.
So the city is moving forward with demo.
Okay, so, that's news to me, I didn't know that. Okay, okay.
Comment in the back?
Yeah, my name's Ted Hill.
Need you to come up to the microphone, we're, we're recording it, sorry. No problem.
Hi, my name's Ted Hill, I'm, I'm the project manager for A and R in the bed, so, like, I'm new to here currently, but I'll be the point person to be able to have contact with and push through things, so, that's all I want to say.
That is in the city of Delaware, right?
Yes.
The property, I know it's, it's on the edge, near the edge, so.
Yes.
We'll just need to have a conversation offline on the, between us. Yeah, okay. Any other questions?
Nope, nothing else.
Any other projects you're, you're, have on your radar that aren't on the fore?
Always.
We've talked about, well, yeah.
We've talked a little bit about Wesleyan, and I, I haven't talked with them, we've just been too busy to really go back into that other project that we were looking at, not the library, but the other former gas station that is actually on Wesleyan property. And that I think that would be good, it would be good for them to address it, it's not their responsibility, there may not be any tanks there, but there's not a lot of information. But it's one that I've been talking with one of the professors there, Krieger, about taking it through and actually using it as a way to teach his students, the environmental students, this is an environmental assessment, this is what we do. We're looking at a gas station, we're going to need to do a geophysical survey, a Phase One, maybe a Phase Two, and then some of the Buster activities, and basically make it a, a project for them while getting it done. So I'm local here, it's close for me, I worked with him a little bit, and then one of my former employees, Janelle, was really involved with him, and so we've been kind of talking about it, but they kind of, you know, we kind of pushed it out, and it didn't really materialize, and, until they want to move forward, we're just waiting. But it's one that I think is eligible, and it's, I believe it's Class C, and they could, they can easily get it addressed under the grant rather than them. It's not their responsibility, so they shouldn't have to deal with it.
Yeah, I know they're, they're still wrestling with what they do with the library, Big League.
And I haven't talked to them about that at all.
Yeah, I talked to them before the holidays, and, yeah, they're just not really sure.
Yeah.
It, it's got issues, they all know that, but they're just not really sure what they're going to do, you know, in terms of renovation, or even demolition, doesn't look like demolition is going to happen, but.
Right, okay.
So.
Anything else?
All good.
No?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Very good, thank you, Jeff. Okay, well, we do need board actions on the, at least the three. Do you want to try to do anything on the fourth one, Brent, at this point, since we don't really have a cost estimate?
Are we able to do that, or?
Do what?
Are we able to do that without?
We had a cost estimate, I would say, probably not.
It sounds like there's other issues that need to be worked out, setting that is going to change.
Yeah, so.
Can I ask one question, though?
Sure.
Would we be able to get access?
Come on back up, we got to record it.
And I shouldn't have asked this before, but it's perfect.
Would we be able to get access to the asbestos survey?
Um, I'll have to check.
Okay.
I would assume so.
Okay.
But I mean, I would assume that the cost is gonna be assessed to the property owner.
Okay, uh, that would probably go under match, but, um, if that's retroactively applied?
Yeah, I, they, they just did the survey, I believe it was yesterday, so.
They what?
I believe the survey was done yesterday, so I don't think the.
Oh, really, okay, 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 all right, thank you.
Yeah. So further discussion, I think at this point, we're ready to advance the three and with three hundred thousand each. Or no, three hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, one hundred and sixty. Of the three. Brent, does that, that work for you?
Yeah, I think the only thing I wanna say is just make sure we keep the, don't tie your agreement, go after directly on that budget because things may change. I know a couple of these sites, Jeff has indicated these get some more information together, so I can see the cost estimate changed. The three hundred thousand dollars ones probably won't change because that's the cap for an assessment, but the hundred and sixty thousand dollar one might.
Oh, okay.
So I just don't want it to, I don't want a decision by the land bank tied to, uh, tied to an exact number. It's more, we approve it on a site by site basis and then, uh, I should come up, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Just know that, um, I guess, approve them on a site by site basis and then know that the procedure for when we do these applications is Emily and I will put together a draft application. If we can do it online, we will, if not, it'll be the form and then any attachments. And that'll be sent along to the land bank for review and approval before anything's submitted. So we'll have a process for the applications, but I've gotta iron that out with Justin.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
All right, so, um, let's go for the first one, the Ashley Petroleum, twenty-one South Franklin, three hundred thousand dollar match, we'll do that one first. Any, any comments or anything? I would ask for an approval to authorize CEC that amount to submit, up to that amount.
So moved.
Okay, second, second Sandra. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, um, then we'll go to the next one, which is the Lake Street property. Um, again, similar, similar sort of approach, three hundred thousand is the proposed cost for this one. An entertaining motion to approve up to three hundred thousand to, for CEC to submit on that one.
Stayed.
Okay, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's two, and then the third one, the Ashley Gateway Remediation Project, the other property in Ashley. Um, again, same, same process, we'll authorize one hundred and sixty thousand at this point, um, to, for that one to be submitted. Does that work okay, Brent?
So do you wanna do like a not to exceed or?
A bigger amount?
Just how about for the purposes of approving it, just approve up to the allowable maximum?
Three hundred thousand?
Yeah, cause the allowable maximum of the grant program is three hundred thousand.
Okay.
So if we just do that, then it gives us room to.
Flexibility.
Flexibility with the budget, yes.
Yeah, makes sense, and again, we have to submit the appropriate amounts, but up to three hundred would give it.
Right, correct.
Okay, okay, so up to three hundred thousand?
Uh, we'll move that, so moved.
Is there a second, second Sandra? Um, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, uh, that takes care of those three and, um, just for everyone's sake, you know, we're, the land bank is required to have one meeting a quarter, this meets that requirement, but, you know, we've got time between February and March to do another meeting. If circumstances change, another application gets advanced, um, you know, we can, we can certainly pull a meeting in, in February or March. And, uh, again, if it's, ends up being April first is the opening of the application period and we'll be ready. Um, okay, so again, thank you. Thanks everybody, Jeff and Brent and Emily, thank you for your work on that. Um.
Annual meeting?
Annual meeting, yeah, there is, I think everybody's been copied on the Ohio Land Bank Association Annual Meeting, they do this every year in April, this year it's in Columbus, so won't be any lodging and extended travel and everything, which makes it a little better, a little easier to get back and forth. I, I don't know if I'm gonna go, I may at this point?
I, I would like to attend.
Yeah. Sandra, I don't know if you're planning on going, but what I'm proposing is, what I would propose is we authorize uh, the payment of the fee and any travel and parking related expenses, cause shouldn't be any overnight expense.
And there's an early bird registration deadline, so what is that, do you have it in front of you?
Um, early bird?
The early bird, one day is two hundred and twenty-five dollars, the full conference is three hundred and twenty-five, and that is before February twenty-eighth.
So we got a little time with that.
Yeah.
I guess I would encourage people that are going to try to.
Yeah, make that early bird date. Um, so I'd recommend we approve the early bird registration, travel expenses and then parking, cause it's downtown Columbus and, and for each individual. And then, uh, that way you can, if you wanna go, you can go, if you're not, you're currently making, you know, you know, we're not obligated to, to do that. Is that okay, is that sound okay?
And, Ally, you might wanna reach out to everybody at least a couple of weeks in front of the early bird deadline and probably do it all on one.
Sure, sure, make it be easier to do it on one.
I know she'll voluntarily ask for it.
Yeah, right Ally?
Is that, is that fair?
With a smile.
Is this?
They'll have to get reimbursed.
I was gonna say, land bank, we, we reimburse, so you'll have to pay for it and then, um, we'll get you reimbursed.
Okay.
But can you handle all the registrations, if we give you credit card numbers or whatever, just?
Okay, so Ally will be the coordinator, so if you wanna go, just reach out to Ally and, and she'll get you registered. So, I guess I would propose a motion to pay for the registration, transportation and parking for anybody who does wanna go.
And it's, it's a reimbursement kind of form of, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so moved.
Yeah, that's fine, I can't think of any other expenses that would be incurred, but obviously if they were, if they were candidate identified, we'll have to deal with that later.
Yeah. Okay, I would entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved. Approve the registration, uh, for the land bank annual meeting in Columbus, uh, uh, and with the effort to try to and take advantage of the early bird deadline.
And parking and travel.
Yep.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, Ally, you got what you need?
Got it.
All right. Um, that's the annual meeting. There are a couple other, there are actually three other things under other business I'd like to just bring up. Um, I don't know if you remember the Henderson Road, uh, property over in Concord Township where, um, neighbors were complaining about an abandoned property, um, but they were, the owner was current on the taxes and, or no, the owner was way delinquent on the taxes, I'm sorry, this is the one. They just couldn't get a hold of the owners, cause this person died without any heirs. Um, and so the treasurer initiated foreclosure, the prosecutor is working through it, um, and they're waiting for title work and looks like it'll get done here real soon, in which case, um, my guess is they'll, they'll go through the auction, sheriff's auction presumably. And, um, if that happens, it's very likely that someone, the neighbors in particular, would buy that property. And it's worth way more than, than what the property taxes are owed on it, so that would be, again, the land bank didn't play a formal role, but, you know, we helped initiate this, this transaction. So it looks, looks positive, it looks like that'll get resolved.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the, I did, uh, you know, we've talked before about the possibility of doing a local demolition grant program since the state has stopped, stopped doing that.
I can pass one on.
Oh, yeah, I, I pulled together some, just, uh, discussion, I pulled together a discussion document on, on, uh, on this very topic. Ally, if anyone to, uh, actually, Scott, any? But, uh, again, kind of by background, the ODOD, as we all know, had two years of demolition grants, uh, grant programs that they stopped because all the county weren't spending all their money, quite honestly. And so they didn't renew it last year and so, um, the, our land bank does have a recurring source of revenue. It's, it's a delinquent tax, um, assessment account, DT, DTAC, whatever it stands for. Um, treasurer, uh, and prosecutor and, uh, land bank share in that, the, the money that's built up in the DTAC fund and that's, uh, money that's collected to, uh, on penalties and everything. So, um, so anyway, I would, you know, we talked briefly before, maybe we could re, just create a program here um, just for Delaware County properties, um, and what I've done is laid out an outline of items that I would suggest we ought to include in a program. And, uh, I'll just kinda go through them real quickly, but, uh, our emphasis ought to be on commercial properties. Um, we ought to have a preference for government organizations and nonprofits, but clearly willing to partner with private, uh, private entities. Um, prefer to have a positive economic development component. And a lot of this is similar to the, to the ODOD program, uh, have a, uh, need a community partner or applicant. Um, can be public or private property, if, if an agreement is struck with a private owner. Um, twenty-five percent local match, we'd like to have, um, you know, the, the owner of the property have, uh, have some skin in the game, so to speak. Um, the DTAC fund does generate about sixty to seventy thousand as it's currently structured. That can change, it can go up and it can go down, um, you know, it should grow a little bit every year, just as the number of properties increase, but, um, we generate about sixty to seventy thousand a year from that, so we could, you know, we could probably demolish one, two, three properties a year um, just from that. We do have two hundred and some thousand of reserves in the land bank, um, balances in the land bank account, so we could, you know, if we wanna get aggressive, we see a particular, uh, flow of, of potential properties, we could, we could tap into some of that as well. Um, I would recommend that we use a similar application process to what the ODOD does and administer it with a third party. I don't wanna get into the business of administering demolition grants and I don't think you want me to get into the business of administering demolition grants. Um, and then it'd be, it'd be a reimbursement basis as well, similar to the way it is done today. So, um, interested in thoughts? I'm not proposing we, we create a program today, but, uh, maybe in, in our second quarter meeting, you know, we could, we could put a little more, uh, structure to this and, and make a proposal, but. So I'm interested in, in your thoughts on, everybody's thoughts on that?
Well, my first thought is number six, the twenty-five percent local match, is that sufficient skin in the game on the part of the, uh, participant? And that's a question, it's not a recommendation. I mean, sixty, seventy thousand aren't gonna go very far, very long, so.
Right, right. I, I just don't know how much activity we're gonna have.
Yeah, nor do any of us.
Right, right. And again, it, it's adjustable, um, we can adjust it year to year, we can adjust it by other parameters. But that, that's a good point, I, I, clearly we want, um, you know, skin in the game, uh, with the person who's, who's doing the demolition.
So I'm just trying to think of like an example project, maybe the, uh, I think when it was the Genoa Township that wanted help with their demolition of the police station, would that kind of fit with?
Yeah, yeah, it, that was a demolition grant, um, under the round one or two, whichever one it was.
Cause that was government driven, this program would help fund it.
Yeah, we've had, we've had both, we've had some private sector, uh, demolitions, we've had some public, um, buildings demolished. Um, the city of Delaware had the two auto parts buildings on Spring Street. Now, they were private, privately owned, but the city bought them, so the city owned them and, you know, the, the grant program knocked those down. Um, Sunbury had a couple, there were some, a whole bunch of them in Powell, you know, that are privately owned and the demolition grants have helped, helped a lot with downtown Powell's, uh, rent, or revitalization efforts. So, so we can, we can do either way. I think it's worked, worked well.
Okay, that's Jeff.
Sure, Brent, yeah.
Again, Brent Smith, CEC. So I agree with, um, knowing now that what the budget is, um, it would be something where you could consider an annual allocation, say we're gonna put out fifty thousand dollars every April first, first come, first, well, not first come, first served, if you can determine. Is there a scoring system or something like that? Um, but I think with the match, you may wanna reserve, if, if you're considering commercial properties, you can have a different match for say a commercial property, or just have a match, like a twenty-five percent match for a commercial property, so if it's privately owned, um, so that somebody has the adequate skin in the game, but then I think what you wanna make sure you're doing is if it's a municipality or somebody else that's also, you know, a public entity, maybe they don't have a match, um, because what you wanna, I mean, the biggest thing you wanna do, you know, always what the land bank's trying to do is, uh, foster redevelopment to get a property back into usable, into somebody else's hands to generate that tax income. So I think you wanna make sure it's gonna be geared towards being most favorable towards the land bank and, and greater Delaware County's goals. Um, the other thing I was thinking we could do is talk with Sean, Sean Carvin, the president of Ohio Land Bank Association and see if anybody else has done something similar, because it would be really beneficial to know how it's structured, like the guts of it, because obviously, you know, with the state program, the state has the, the money, they have their, their program, but then, and you have a limited staff and then I was also thinking of like, how would you hire a third party, like who would do this sort of thing? And I know that, you know, obviously CEC, we've had some interest in the past of helping you with this. So, um, that would be one thing I'd be willing to do, is reach out to him, I've gotta reach out to him on some other, for some other land banks and it might just be a good conversation to say, um, you know, has somebody else done this and, and do you have a structure or recommendations? And then we get greater help and you get a little bit of return for, um, for being an Ohio Land Bank Association member. It's a great organization, by the way.
Yeah.
So that, that's what.
Yeah, okay, very helpful, Brent, if you could reach out, what's, what's the, the director's name?
Uh, Sean Carvin, I think it is.
Yeah, that's right, I've, I've met him before.
Yeah, and I've met him a couple of times. We went to the, uh, fall conference up in Mount Vernon and then we were at the annual meeting last year. And we'll, we'll probably be at the one this year, but, uh, it coincides with our company's annual meeting, so I won't be there. Cause I have to be in Pittsburgh, but, okay, well, thank you, we'll, we'll look into that and I'll, I'll report back. And then if you could email me the, your, um.
The outline?
Your outline, if, if you're willing to share that, that could kinda get my gears turning, give me a, a starting point to help you out with this.
Very good, very good. Yeah, again, I think it's, it's been successful during Delaware County, very successful. And inevitably, there're gonna be other properties that need to come down, we've spread the word, I think the word is getting out. Thankfully, we don't have hundreds and hundreds or thousands, which some of the urban counties have, and they've got literally thousands in some cases of properties that need to come down. So, um, other, other thoughts, other comments, Sandra, Michelle?
It's a good idea.
Yep.
Gary, good. All right, we'll, we'll, I'll work with Brent and we'll flesh it out a little more for the next meeting, presumably in April. We have to have a meeting in April for our annual meeting, um, so, uh, we'll do that. Uh, one last topic is the audit. We do have, it's, it's a new year, which means we have to audit last year. You know, last year's audit went well, the year before has gone well, Justin and Karen have done an outstanding job of getting that done. And so I think we're just proposing we do the same thing and I'll let Justin lead the discussion.
Thanks, board members. Justin Abbey, Director of Finance. Um, with the next board meeting not being held probably till, um, April, we anticipate some, uh, costs coming through for the annual audit and I was gonna request a blanket approval for a set of costs with three different vendors. One, we'd request, uh, blanket approval for seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars for audit costs with Ray and Associates. They're the third party CPA firm that's been contracted with the state to do the annual audit. Also a request for twelve hundred dollars with Julian and Group, they're a CPA firm out of Westerville. They help us prepare the annual financial statements. And then third is just four hundred dollars with the state auditor's office. Um, they actually have a review process for these, um, third party CPA audits, so that's their cost to review the audit itself.
So ten thousand roughly?
Right.
Okay, doing the math while you're speaking.
So, yeah, I, it just occurred to me after we set out the agenda that, oh, we got an audit we gotta deal with and if we wait till April to approve the expenses, the vendors might get a little anxious.
Correct.
So, um, and, and again, it's gone well, Karen and Justin do a lot of that, making sure it's done and working with Julian and Group and Ray and the state. Any, I'd entertain a motion to approve those, those, those three, or do you wanna lump them together, Justin?
Uh, if, all three individually.
The total amount was?
Uh, seven thousand nine hundred.
Total.
Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't run the numbers myself. Um, up to maybe ten thousand dollars for these three set of vendor costs.
Could I move, uh, approve up to ten thousand dollars for audit cost, uh, for twenty twenty-four?
Great.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Great, thank you.
Good, thank you. Um, that's it for me, I didn't have anything else under other business. Um, Sandra, Michelle, Gary, Ally, Scott, anything? You're good? You're good? Okay, anybody else want to bring up a topic, we've got an open mic here? All right, nothing else, uh, it is two twenty.